Welcome everyone to the pre-commissioned work session or committee meeting as we like to call them on April the sixth, 2021. I would like to begin this meeting as we do all of our meetings with a word of prayer. And we do have so much to be thankful for and we have so much to pray for as we move forward. And if everyone please join me. Everyone please remember to... Silence, silence. There are a couple of... Dear Lord, as we assemble here today to do the work of Jefferson County, we ask that you touch us. Dear Lord, you give us the wheat, the wisdom, the spirits of courage and the guidance to do the right things for you. Dear Lord, as we do that, we ask that you touch those with your healing hands that have been victims of this senseless violence that's coming out of Jefferson County. Dear Lord, we ask that you pray for Ariel, Yarwood and her family. Touch them and lift their family up with your healing heart. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with those that are trying to apprehend these perpetrators. Touch them, guide them in the right direction so that these people may be brought to justice. Dear Lord, violence is prevalent throughout our county. Touch all of our citizens and give them a sense of working together and living together in peace and harmony. Dear Lord, we ask that you be with Tony Patelus and his family for the loss of his father-in-law. But for all, dear Lord, please keep us together. Guide us in the direction that we need to go. Oh, we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you, everyone. I'd like to begin with District Five. Commissioner Allen, he has a presentation to make and asked to go first. So Steve, the former...
Commissioner, thank you. It's a pleasure this morning to interview Drew Honeycutt, who is the not-so-new CEO of Innovation Depot. Drew is an entrepreneur at heart and has his own exit with one of his own companies. And after he exited and when he was interviewing for the job, which was a pleasure to sit on, he was helping entrepreneurs develop and he continues to do that here at the Depot. And I thought it'd be a good idea for him to come to the commission and say what he's doing that's new at the Depot. And so Drew, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, commissioners, thank you very much, first and foremost, for the opportunity to be here this morning and also thank you for your continued support. So as Commissioner Ammon said, my name is Drew Honeycutt. I'm the, as he said, not-so-new CEO of Innovation Depot. It's been almost a year now. So I took over back in May of 2020 as everything was wild in the world. And lots changed. It kind of gave us an opportunity to take a step back and to really address our community as an ecosystem and what are our needs. And so I'm really excited about what's happened over the last year, both from a brand change. We've updated our brand, but our team is mostly new. So about half of our team, actually more than half of our team is new in the last year. And we're all focused on building programs around getting more people access to taking an idea and building a business out of it. We're focused on high-growth businesses. And so the focus of my pitch today is just around building a diverse ecosystem and our tech ecosystem. And so what we've built, we've had Velocity Accelerator, which you guys have supported the last few years, and we're very appreciative of that. Velocity is helping companies that they have a product and they're looking to scale. The problem identified in Birmingham is there's a lot of entrepreneurs on all different corners of our community that have great ideas, but they're trying to figure out, without spending my life savings, how do I get an idea into a business? And so what we've developed is a couple of programs, a little further up the funnel, that's getting more people access to these programs. So Vision ID is a program that is free for everyone. It's a seven-day email campaign. It's a great program. It's a way that you can watch videos, links to different programs. We're basically teaching people the intro to entrepreneurship, keywords, terminology, really the framework of how you start thinking like an entrepreneur. Voltage is another program that we launched. We actually wrapped up our first cohort last week, and I'll tell you a little bit more about Voltage in just a minute and the results that we've seen. But in that program, we've seen eighty percent of the companies go from having an idea, they apply with a problem that they've identified. And we're working from, you've got a problem you've identified in the community, now let's work on building a solution towards it. Eighty percent of those now have prototypes that they developed during the nine weeks of the accelerator. And then we've got Velocity. So that's still focused on helping companies go from, I've got a product, now I'm looking to scale it up. So really what we're focused on is giving more people access to the blueprint. How do you go take an idea and build a business? So if you can go to the next slide. I've got a slide next there. I'm sorry about that. What'd you guys? So the three programs again are Vision ID, Voltage and Velocity. So Vision is, I've got an idea, I want to become an entrepreneur. I don't really know how to become, do it without spending all my time and energy searching the internet. So we help compact all that information into one place, give it to you in a daily, easy to understand format. Voltage is helping people take an idea and really prove out that there's a business model there before you go spend all your time and your money and your energy. We help them understand customer discovery. How do you go build prototypes with very, very minimal money? And then Velocity is scaling up. So this next slide, I'm really excited about this. So this is our current cohort. We just graduated last week. As you can see, we have fifty-eight applications to the first cohort and we accepted eleven companies. It's a very diverse cohort of people. Eighty percent of those now have a prototype that they can go sign up businesses with, our customers with, and we're really looking to expand that program.
And in Voltage, they're working a full-time job doing this?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the accessibility piece is, we know entrepreneurs typically, when they're looking to become entrepreneurs, they're working full-time jobs. And so this program is Tuesday, Thursday nights, five-thirty to seven-thirty. It's currently Zoom-based, but we hope to have it in person at the Rainsham Formic down at the Innovation Depot. But yeah, you're right, it's after-hours when entrepreneurs that are looking to try to bridge that gap from being full-time employees into being full-time entrepreneurs. So we're also working with the city on the Rainsham Formic project. We're going to be taking up space in there to really expand access, to get more people access to incubation and space to get their businesses up off the ground. So we, I don't know if you guys noticed, we're one hundred and forty thousand square feet. We have one hundred and ten companies currently in the building, and we have another twenty companies that are in incubation right now, or in acceleration right now, which is in our programs, really going from either Voltage or Velocity. So that's what's going on. So really, we're focused on building an ecosystem. So in 2017, we had sixty-seven startups in Birmingham. We now have over two hundred startups in Birmingham. And so we're looking to grow, you guys talked about high ed a minute ago. High ed's a great example of a business that's in the depot, high growth, lots of opportunity and we're just really excited about this, guys.
Could you also talk a little bit more about some of the wins? I mean, we know Ship, not one of those that came out of the depot, but other well-known companies that started in the depot, the number of jobs they developed?
Yeah, so Fairness is a great, so there's one corner of the depot that has produced well over fifteen hundred jobs, over a billion dollars worth of exits, and that includes companies like Fairness, Fleedo, Medmine. There's a company called Vito GX in Innovation Depot right now. It's really growing fast. There's Rural Urgent Care in there right now. There's Immediate, just raised fifteen million dollars two weeks ago. Wendy is in there, they just raised three and a half million. So there's a lot of high-growth jobs in there right now, and most of them, ninety-five percent of the companies in the depot are either tech-focused or they're biotech-focused. So yeah, it's an interesting time and we're really looking to expand outside of the depot now, so to really build an ecosystem where more people, more entrepreneurs are building businesses in around the depot, so we have that collaboration and really have more ecosystem feel.
Any questions for Coach? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Only other thing I have on my agenda is a community grant for the National Community Foundation Security School Sunday. All the favors through that. And just a couple of updates. Project Bowl, which is Buffalo Rocks' expansion, went before the Birmingham IDB yesterday. They were given seven new stacks of payments, and they are, I don't have the total numbers yet because the IDB did not grant their full request, and there's a variation of that alarm that they're going to work on. And I'll hopefully come back. That is fifty-plus jobs, an average of twenty dollars an hour, and it's in city Birmingham, so it's good. And Matthew said he talked to you.
It's good around the corner from my house. You can't walk in the hole.
Are they, are they making hours?
Yes. Just a typical one there.
For how many years?
For just the period of construction. And I'll get back to you on the rest of it because some of it kind of got on the alarm and how much it actually is. I'd like to deal with the totals. DC Blocks purchased the remainder of the property from JCIDA on Trinity Steel, which is also in the metrics. And they have shown a different, a couple of different variations of what they could do over there, but it will definitely be technology-based. And also, JCIDA sold the Gulf Distributing property. They're still in conversation. There was an unpublished FEMA map that has kind of thrown a wrench into things. I know Cal's been working on it, and I think they're coming up with some good solutions to get things done. There were no incentives done on this. This was an inter-county move with not a significant amount of growth in number of jobs, so we didn't incentivize that. And Othel and I took a trip to the Southern Research Aerospace Facility there, where they do a lot of research and development, and found that it's a top-secret facility, but they do a lot of aerospace work, working with NASA and the US Navy, and never knew they were here. Lots of folks didn't know they were here, but a great partner, and we're figuring out how we can best work together to expand aerospace in and around the camp.
Jay and Alex.
Do what?
We're on the corner.
They're not right across the street from...
You can tell?
I can tell, but it's over there. It's right around the corner.
That's why I thought...
From Buffalo Rock.
I thought it.
Yeah. But right up that end, not far.
I don't hear from Trinity property. We'll be getting some funding back to the county on that, fifty percent of...
Yeah, that was an overall project between city Birmingham and Jefferson County. Originally, the property was brownfield, since it was a steel property, I think it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars that was invested to remediate. And with the first sale to DC Blocks, that money was divided up as well, and proceeds distributed in the same thing year, it'd be fifty-fifty with city Birmingham.
We're in partners.
That's it.
Thank you. Next, we're going to be in District One. We have Commissioner Scale who will be here today, and I will handle burn issues, but that's the way I handle it. Do you want him to handle it or do you want, no, he was...
I do. I was going to, it comes off environmentally, and that's, I'll do the two environmentals and then we're going to let him do his report. We have two audits, one's out of audit, one fifty-one, I four fifty-nine force, may in replacement. There's no funds required. Second is a certain case stores encroachment agreement concerning the sewer easement, and there's no funds required for either of those audits. Both wanted to...
Sir.
Have a moment. Second, I'll let him say aye. Mr. Mark, you're the man.
Thank you, commissioners. I just wanted to take this opportunity to update you all on our garbage collection services contract that we make available to the citizens at their option. And I'm going to step out and give our Am Waste representative an individual as well.
And I also need for you to get to a microphone because I think that, is that right, Helen? It'd be better if you did.
Yeah. I think it's...
You go right here.
We put together kind of a few notes of kind of how we got here and what we're doing now, and obviously not summarizing. But first of all, I apologize to you all and your constituents, to our customers for this difficult changeover. It's been a process, to say the least, but I'm really excited about the team that we have in place now and what we're doing now going forward. So back in 2016 was the last time we awarded a garbage collection services contract, and that was to advance disposal. Later on, Waste Management purchased advanced disposal. So through COVID, then our existing contract was purchased by Waste Management, and we were experiencing a lot of complaints from our customers about missed garbage pickups. So with that and your desires, we bid the garbage collection contract. During that, we had four bidders, and we accepted those bids in November 2020, and we awarded the lowest bid to Am Waste. And there's been some, you know, one point of confusion we've had with our customers is how did we award a bid? So eighty percent of the customers at the time were signed up for one cart, you know, the service for just one cart. They have options to give two carts, yard debris and other type things. Most all of our customers were using just the service of one cart. So we based our bid recommendation on that and one option, which was much lower than all the other bids. Am Waste received customer account information, sorry. Our new company, Am Waste, received information, list of customers from Waste Management. When was that, David, in April?
I don't know. That was back in February or something.
In February. And then Am Waste started placing the new containers out on March the eighth. And therein lies, I did not do a good job of telling our citizens what's coming and what's going on, but they start putting out new carts. Then about a week later, two weeks later, Waste Management, who had previously been advanced disposable, starts taking their carts. And they not only took their cart, a lot of the customers had purchased a cart from Home Depot or Lowe's, and they would accidentally take those. So we got carts coming and going everywhere, and it was, it was a tough few weeks. Once we started experiencing the problems, and we all know when, a couple of weeks ago, we got with Am Waste, and I want to introduce the Mr. Rick Sweeney, because I represented it from them. He came on board. They hired additional staff, set up a call center, and they're really just been working day and night to answer all the calls and help our customers get situated right. We've gotten the mouth out to the citizens about which day their pickup is, and Helen Hayes has been, I don't know how somebody can kayak down a river and answer Facebook questions at the same time, but she's been working day and night on it, as well as Justin. So we've had a lot of them. We wish we would have done better. At preparing the whole situation to kind of cut down on the number of complaints, we're committed to answering each one individually and getting them solved. We've received, to date, we've received fifteen hundred calls of requests and complaints, and they got them counted, guys, in the several different categories. A lot of them are new customers wanting to use the service and various options. A lot of them are the cart issues, and right now we have forty percent of those complete. And so that's what we're focusing on there.
Excuse me, you got forty percent complete. Clarify that, David.
Of the cart issue complaints, whether theirs was erroneously taken by Waste Management or wasn't delivered by Am Waste, we have called those people back, and if they got their cart replaced back or got the new cart out there, and there's probably higher than that by today, but I gave you these numbers to show we're very serious about getting the call, making sure we know who it is and hold them up that we call them back and get their cart situation corrected. And we also have, I can email you the call log that Am Waste has created, taken the calls, logged it all down, name, number, email address, and then that way we can follow.
One of the complaints that I'm getting now, and we've already had, I know it's seven calls this morning before the meeting today, is that when they call the Am Waste hotline, and that's very helpful, appreciate that, but they're unable, sometimes they hold thirty minutes and can't get in touch with someone. It's kind of like trying to get to Jefferson County. You know, you got a number up there, you're very right, you'll have that number up there, but you can't get anybody when you dial it up. So we need for you, and it may be after the fact now, but these citizens are expecting results, and they don't look to you. They don't know you from Adams House, Kevin. They don't know Cal. But they do know their elected officials. They know Commissioner Tyson, and they know Commissioner Knight, Commissioner Adams, Commissioner Scale, Commissioner Stephen, and they are depending on us to get this done. And they say that it is a lack of leadership that allowed this to happen. And I can assure you that if it was a lack of leadership, it will never, ever happen again, or a lack of guidance, because we cannot direct... or a lack of guidance, because we cannot direct this gentleman to do anything. Okay? We go to the county manager and, and they're supposed to put the processes in place that this legislative body approves. We approved this last December to get it done. And it's rolling out, it's going to be a two week, probably learning period. But I need Am Waste to be totally engaged in making this a smooth transition and to talk to these people.
Yes, sir.
To them understand that, that, that it will be better. And that we're going to do everything that we can to give you better service than you receive and be more transparent than what you have.
Absolutely.
That's, that's so important.
Rick, why don't you come up and tell them what you've done today and where we are today.
Okay, um, so thanks, thank you, Commissioner, I certainly understand and, um, yeah. Apologize to the residents that were impacted specifically by the, the waste cart delivery. Along with that, with the informational packets, um, so, excuse me. Uh, latter part of last week, actually Friday morning, we did complete, um, the bulk deliveries uh, to, to your question, point about how many of the, there were twenty-five thousand six hundred ninety-eight customers or residents that we've received, uh, information on. Um, as, as Phil pointed out, we have received roughly fifteen hundred calls just via, um, a significant portion of those, probably about a third, were associated with cart delivery. Um, either not having received a cart or residents who had not previously had the service wanting to, wanting to now sign up for the service. So, um, that being said, uh, over the weekend, once the, uh, the bulk deliveries were completed and we did start, uh, service on Thursday and Friday last week, um, all routes were completed. Oh, thank you. Uh, all routes were completed, uh, on, on time, on schedule, on the, on the identified service day. Um, as we did through yesterday as well. Uh, we have, for those customers that did have an issue that had not already been addressed, the forty that, forty percent that we'd identified, uh, completed, closed out, confirmed with customer, um, through the weekend, we did an email blast out to the remaining customers, uh, to, several of them were just, had called in need of cart. Um, and so requesting their email confirmation back to us if they have not received the, the cart as of yet. Uh, we have three crews that are on the, on the standby to, uh, deliver those upon notification. So, um, yeah, our, our full intent, Mr. that, that, and to all of you, that, uh, the, the service that we will provide going forward, uh, you got my personal commitment as well as our company's commitment, that, uh, we will do everything we can uh, and will work tirelessly to, uh, to ensure that, that the residents of Jefferson County get the highest level of service we can provide to them, so.
And you started picking up April first.
We did, yes, sir.
So today will be your first, end of the day, today will be their first full week. And, uh, we expect the next week to really start getting smoother and then running smoother.
What, what, and what we have seen, we, we track our calls daily also, so I, uh, when we were, when, when we saw the influx of calls, um, and some influx was expected, uh, again, um, fully our responsibility, fully my responsibility. The, uh, um, the delayed cart delivery, I think drove a lot of the, the above expectation calls. We had, um, added three additional personnel, uh, specifically for the, for the contract on, on top of the, the customer service group that we already had. Um, we, we, I, we look at daily our abandoned calls, uh, and our, uh, speed to answer. And so what we have seen over the, from Friday through yesterday, uh, we've seen that number start to trend down in both the abandoned lost calls, uh, as well as the average speed of answers. So certainly understand and apologize for the frustrations that any residents may have experienced, but, uh, please be assured that is not standard for us, nor will it continue.
Uh, the complaints I'm getting, number one, no notice of a change.
Yes, sir.
That's on us, that's our responsibility. There's no excuses, but it is our responsibility. And so we have to accept that, no matter what cost. Fee increase, uh, the fees are higher than they once were. And missed pickup and, you know, a delay, the only notice a lot of them had is that they got an Am Waste cam. They, they had to put it, so, uh, it's been a tough transition, but I'm glad to hear you're here today and speaking to the issue. We want to reassure our citizens that, you know, we're engaged in this and that you're going to do everything, your company, to make it, to make it better. Uh, you know, sometimes we take this kind of service for granted until, you know, get it.
Yes, sir.
And that's really problematic. Do y'all have any kind of recycle?
Um, we, we are not providing a recycling service as part of our offering, um, to the county at this time. Um, we do have other contracts where we provide a, a recycling option associated with the, uh, with our service permissions, but, but that was not part of the, the contract, contract for the county services.
And I, you said that the pickups are being made for services even though I got an email last night where somebody said it's hit and miss and I got missed, that, which was yesterday.
With a scheduled, their first scheduled pickup with us was yesterday?
I, I don't, I have no idea what the schedule was.
Right, yes, sir.
They got an extension down, give you that information.
Okay, yes, sir, please, we'll, we'll, our, our, uh, our, our standard is if, if there is a missed service call in, if it's before noon today, uh, we will take care of it today. If it is, uh, anytime afternoon, we'll expend all efforts to try and, and still pick it up today, but no later than business, uh, next business day, so.
Well, you know, the other company had four years and it didn't work out. I hope, I certainly hope you have a better sense.
Yes, sir.
Rate than that, uh, because, you know, as, as Commissioner Stevens said, the buck stops here, we take that. But at the same time, we're, we're depending on you to make this right.
Yes, sir, absolutely, thanks.
I have one, the, the, uh, Am Waste customer service line, is that hotline that you were talking about?
Yes.
That's, that's the one?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and does the management staff get reports on, on calls that come in or?
Yes, sir.
Call issues?
Yes, sir.
Um, what, what does that look like and how often is that?
We did get it, uh, daily and we're probably just, you know, once we get to the end of the day today, we're, we're going to get it weekly and I, I'll forward it, that'd be all. But I want to monitor to make sure they followed up and call them. And then we're going to spy check and call some people back and ask them how, you know, uh, how, how that went, just to make sure. My first impression of Rick and what he's done has been awesome and, uh, I, I share the blame in not getting the notice out and setting the expectations. But I feel really good about where we're going. We can kind of get over this hump and hurry up and get the cart situation settled. I think we're going to have really good, consistent service.
Yeah, and there was a couple of lessons on the area and I mean, our, our focus really was the service issues that we were having and making sure those got resolved. We had very good checking references, Am Waste's performance was really good before we awarded the contract. But obviously I think lessons learned from the transition service. We haven't actually transitioned to a new provider in twenty years because it was on its, the only advanced was all the same company. So I think we underestimated how we should be prescriptive about communicating with the customers and, and obviously like Cal said, making sure that we got the word out ourselves. So, uh, you know, we learned a lot of lessons there, we knew that we were going to make some transition issues, I think, but like, we definitely could have done better on the communication side and make sure everybody knew. And then obviously the storms impacted getting the cart deliveries too. Uh, but, but we really, we really hope the actual service improves and gets reliable for everybody, uh, over the next few weeks, so.
Commissioner Swinney, what is that number that, that we can pass over?
Uh, it's on the right machine, I'm sorry.
The two oh five seven eight eight two hundred?
That is the number, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And we placed that on Facebook as soon as we got it.
Yes, sir.
And, but, believe it or not, you can put out that information and everyone sees it, but they still call the commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Because the buck stops here.
Understood.
And the majority of this exposure is in District Three and District Four. And we're still receiving, like, today I received seven calls before we came in here.
Yes, sir.
And I, I received how many last night, Cal, that I forwarded to you?
Three or four.
Yeah, I, three or four while I was at home last night at seven, after seven o'clock at night, that I was receiving, that I forwarded to home to Maddie. So this is an ongoing problem. And I'm going to need for y'all, you two, to remain fully engaged. And I'm going to ask that you copy me when it's a constituent of District Three and copy Commissioner Knight on District Four. I believe that, uh, the other districts are much, are, are lesser involved. I know you have some pockets in, in Vestana, in Uncorp, corporate, Jefferson County around Vestana, uh, and.
They're still just calling, just.
They're, they're still calling, so if you will copy each commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Uh, so we can keep a track and a good record of that because we have to keep our constituent set up.
Completely understood.
And we're depending on you and you and you to get that done. And.
So what you're saying is that we have, if anybody has a problem, call Jimmy Stick at five five five? Three, three two five, five 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 five, everyone's done it anyway, so I'm good.
We would prefer if you call that hotline number or even better.
But they're going to have to man the hotline number and they can't have a thirty minute wait.
Right.
You ain't got a thirty minute wait, Mal.
Start on calling the IRS.
Right, or, or email, but, and if y'all get calls, we can get their phone number and email address, that's very helpful.
I, I do that, I think.
You do?
Okay. I'm doing my job, y'all do yours.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity, Commissioner.
Thank, thank you all, thank you.
Y'all have a vegetation service too?
Yes, sir. That, that's, uh, this is about twenty-eight percent of the residents in the, in the county have subscribed to that service. So, yes, sir.
I think about two hundred U customers call them Saturday too.
Uh, next on the agenda is when the community develops a new resource service committee.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. We just have one hour today. Um, this, our resolution authorizes, uh, the department to apply for a US Department of Health and Human Services on behalf of UAB for an advancing health literacy to enhance equitable community response to COVID- nineteen grant. And also authorizes the commission president to sign all of it. I could live that.
I'll say. All right, let me ask, what does this do, Doc?
Basically, it's to educate, uh, those about COVID and taking the vaccine out there, uh, in the lower income areas.
Do we have, uh, a number, Fisher, that, that we have a person that's not taking the vaccine?
Uh, it's, the majority of the, uh, the waiting is, is, is coming down. I gave you a document, um, of the, of the shot clinics, uh, as of March the thirtieth. We have a few, uh, Melton Baptist Church, uh, will open up this week. And we have three others that will be opening up this week. And we do have a fellow site that's coming to Jefferson County. Uh, they really don't want me to talk about it, but, but I, I just told you that, that part. Um, they, as, as they come, we will add to the list. This list right here has not been updated since the thirtieth. They are asking, uh, for us to go through, uh, the Health Department and EMA are working together with, uh, with all of these agencies to make sure that we don't open up clinics next door to each other like we did the food. And that's why we lost the grant for, for our over saturated food. That's why I am over the health initiative and I have asked all the commissioners for science to where we can make sure that we run this proper and that we don't overlap. Because you do have, if you look at, you have several agencies out here that's doing the vaccinations. Then you will have them actually coming in with a mask in it. So what we don't want to do is to over saturate because now the young, the younger, uh, adults are being added to the, uh, to the list. So as I turn the list in, the, uh, the vaccination, uh, clinics will actually go out and look at the site and they will determine whether that site is proper for a, uh, a site that will receive vaccinations or not. But when, when, when commissioners go out and they own and try to do it, it stops, it messes up the whole process. It oversaturates the area and then, uh, we won't be getting the vaccinations in like we should be getting them in. We just now started getting them in on a regular basis. And that's just been the last couple of days. So, you know, and I just asked, uh, to make sure that, uh, you know, we just, we just respect each other, uh, uh, committees.
But there's some of these sites that really doesn't come through the Health Department or UAB, right? They get straight, I mean, they get the vaccine at the Walmart or stuff.
Right, and we, right, and we add those to the list, but they do have, uh, they are notified when Wal, when a Walmart gets, uh, the vaccination. The Health Department is notified by there and so is, uh, EMA is notified. Because that's the only way we can, uh, use the, uh, call center in order to make the appointments for, uh, people that's actually need, need rides, uh, I need to remember, uh, to the, uh, to the sites. So we do have, uh, already, uh, who know you been teams has already set up. So as they call in for their appointments, they, they send them to the closest, uh, site, uh, the, the vaccination site that's only, uh, uh, two days, uh, calling. So the next time I come in, I'm quite sure it's going to be a, a whole lot more than that, that they are, are providing transportation to. So we are, it's actually working. So it's doing what it's supposed to do and all of these, uh, transportation, uh, is actually in, is in Jefferson, uh, County, where they are, uh, providing the transportation. So they are doing what they're supposed to do and this is just like I told you, it's only been a, like a two day, uh, transportation, uh, list.
If somebody needs transportation, how, how, how does they get on this list? Because there's very little of my district on here.
It's, uh, they call the, uh, two oh five, the eight, five, eight, twenty, eight, five, eight, twenty-two, twenty-one. That's the Jefferson County.
Okay, they call, they call that one.
They call that number and that will put them up to the whole, uh, uh, site. So EMA is getting ready to do a mass text out and they will have all of that, their numbers and everything on there. So they will actually notify them, all the citizens in Jefferson County, that they do have transportation. So if you call and make an appointment right now, or you email and make an appointment, they will ask you, do you need transportation? And if you hit, you need transportation, the people who book your appointment, they will, uh, put down that you need transportation and they will book you closest to the, to your address. So that's how you are located unless you request to go to another location. And then they will book you transportation, uh, to that, between yellow cab and class training. They have been able to move the citizens.
Commissioner, all of these different sites that are, that are administering the vaccine, are they all?
Commissioner, all of these different sites that are that are administering the vaccine, are they all are they here? Are they on the unified database where all of your information is taken and included in government data?
Yes, all of it is is in one unified database. So they are pulling from that list, it was like almost two hundred thousand people. So they are getting the list down now, it may be about a hundred and thirty thousand now. So it's going every week, you see the list, it's it's going down, 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 down. So hopefully by the uh by May, we will not have a list that large. And we would we would be doing a lot of sites, uh the massive sites will actually come without an appointment. So all you're doing is driving in, uh taking your vaccination. And then if you uh have to, two, they will let you know when you come back, you know, with the card. And if we if they get Johnson and Johnson, there will be a one uh shot and they can actually uh leave after that. All of that will be within the call center once they call and book the appointment.
Uh back to my question, Dr. Hilton, do we have enough of percentage of though this is to educate people about taking the vaccine?
And safety and safety protocols pertaining to COVID. So it's two things, safety protocols and then uh information pertaining to the vaccine.
And there 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 will be actually be door lockers, they're going out with door lockers and mailing mail out pieces to the residents. So and that's gonna be in the populated areas where they don't see much movement and appointments being made. They will actually do a mail out or and send people out to actually knock on doors within that area. And they're starting in Smithfield uh this week.
Do we have an idea of how many of the percentage of the population is like scared to take the vaccine or not taking the vaccine? Do we have any kind of?
They don't have any uh percentage because it's a lot of people on the way with this. So right now, if you look at, you know, because young people are just opening up. So they really can't tell, but they 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 are saying that the younger adults are the ones that's uh that's being uh tested positive for COVID. So and that's the the group that's thirty and uh under, uh majority of the ones that's being tested, that's testing positive for COVID. And the ones that's older, they are actually, you know, on the list to get vaccinations. And as they they age rate come in, come down, they will be vaccinated as they coming down.
Do we do we have an updated list of where they're doing testing? Like you have on this, this is good information.
A lot of the testing sites have shut down, the only one they still have up and active, you will see uh one on this list, Leisure Field is still up and active. They're still testing and you can uh be tested within uh the Kahava uh health centers, they are still testing. The Health Department is uh is still testing. So you can find some drug stores and they will actually have that on the next list. And I think that's all of that.
And when you call, do they tell you which one which vaccine you would be getting?
They'll tell you all of that. You you will know exactly which vaccine that's available. And you can ask for them and they'll tell you whether, you know, they'll tell you where to go get it and they'll book your appointment at that site. Like if you want a Johnson and Johnson, I know Sam's and Wal-Mart's been having all of them. And so they'll tell you then then you can conventionally do that.
That's what I.
And uh we do have a lot of churches that that want to participate. And like I told you, that we send to the Health Department, the Health Department determines that, send to UAB. UAB determines Kahava, they determine where they want to go and they report it back to the Health Department. It's not, it ain't, it's not like uh I can just put everything in my district. It it that ain't the way it works. So I know that was mentioned and that's a that's a flat outline. So I'm just making sure they understand that, that ain't the way it go. Because they are, the the Health Department is over there and they know exactly what they doing. Now Sheva don't go out and look at nobody's site and do nothing, all I'm doing is reporting it to the Health Department, giving all of the lists are in the district. So I just wanted to make sure they y'all understood that.
Well, I don't think y'all is like, I should.
Okay, well, well, the shoe fit where whoever's staying. I did want to uh bring up about uh the uh Ms. Yarborough uh shooting, the shooting incident that killed uh Ms. Yarborough and she worked in internal revenue issue in in the revenue department. And uh we have had a lot of people to actually put up, uh not a lot of people, just I know Ricky Smile put up five thousand dollars for war. And I wanted to see if the commissioners would like to put up since this is one of the employees of the county. And I think we would do it for any other employees that of the county. And I just really feel bad about this. I actually was headed to the park to East Egg hunt today that this happened. And when I was getting off the exit, I seen all the police. So I just didn't get off the exit, I just kept straight. And I was actually going out there to a uh church east egg. And I'm just glad that uh I I have delayed. And if delayed for about an hour, if not, I would've been trapped out there with with a one year old and a seven year old, my grandkids. So I just thank God, um just for looking after me. And I wanted to see if any of the commissioners, I talked to uh to uh Adam said he would like to give five hundred and I would give twenty five, would you like to give something, Commissioner?
A thousand.
You give a thousand in our Commissioner Knight.
I've already committed to your thousand.
A thousand, okay. So we have uh.
I'm making it.
You, okay, I'll only, uh, okay. So and I will talk to our Commissioner Scales.
Can he match me and you one thousand, one thousand?
Good, good, I mind trade.
Like, say that this this young lady that uh that worked for us, um I knew her personally, she used to work for Buss. And she was counting down there, five young ladies and uh sentences. And um she was collecting the kids.
Right. And it just is hard for you to say that. But I will be meeting with some ministers today, I mean, we need to file a law about uh the violence within uh the city of Birmingham, really in Jefferson County, it's covering, it's gonna cover uh all of Jefferson County, they call me and I will be able to have to meet with them. This money will be, it will be five thousand, five hundred dollars, I will talk to Commissioner Scales about this. It will be going to crime stoppers uh or any uh lead or conviction or any person uh that's involved within the killing of Ms. Yarborough. Thank you, Commissioner, so much for this and I just, her parents are really destroyed behind this. And she was actually in college trying to get a master's degree in business.
I would like to move to approve the uh contribution to crime stoppers, to add to our contribution to crime stoppers in the amount of fifty five hundred dollars plus whatever Commissioner Scales will add to be included on on the appropriate agenda. I guess Thursday, we we make that by Thursday, we need to do new business if we do that.
If you if you do if you do this, if if Commissioner Tyson already had this on the agenda this time?
He wants.
Okay, then if you if you move to do new business in the committee and it will be on regular business with the agenda and if you just, we could fill in the amount between now and Thursday.
I move for new business, second, consideration what I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move, I move that we approve of the amount to be determined and additional contribution crime stoppers to be placed for the uh arrest or conviction or uh leading to the information leading to the resident conviction.
Crime stopper status of Ms. Yarborough.
Second.
I'll spin first and second all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Administrative and Infrastructure Committee, we have roads and transportation, uh grants middle road widening project and subject tank design proposal. Do you have any questions on that? Anybody, uh, move the second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
We have a eight count amendment on on-call plan review service uh for our on-call plan review. Uh Cal, describe that a little bit better for me.
Commissioners, typically when we design the bridge, when we design the in-house or have someone design for us, we have a secondary review done by a bridge engineer who goes to Albatso. This is that for the bridges we're designing in-house actually, we'll do reviews for us.
Move the aye. Second, I'll say aye.
Aye.
We'll go through several of these, uh, sir.
Oh, Sam, move by the three.
Is that?
All right, no, number three is moving seven, I'll fair.
Aye.
Aye, yeah. Alter planning, design, bicycle and pedestrian, the plan is level one. We have an Aldo courtesy notification for pavement per preservation on I fifty nine, that's well long needed. We have Morgan Road widening project, uh pavement attract twenty three sign relocation on Morgan Road. I guess that's that for that big sign that's over on the left-hand side of the road there. Right past Parkwood and. Okay, that's that's the one that looked like it was in the way.
It's been moved.
Okay. County Morris, for member and minister, the Loud City Eli's contract for our ACCA storm debris removal. City of Trustville, same thing. Hydroengineering Solutions Project, number thirty seven nineteen three ninety three, the water share turbine uh development. Phase one and resolution for debris cleanup due to vacation of storms. I think we'll probably do through nine and then talk about ten.
So, move forward through nine.
Any questions? All the folks say aye.
Aye.
Number ten's resolution for debris cleanup due to various storms. County Road Crew, we authorize pickup, displace the debris's up from the storms which occurred on January the twenty fifth and March seventeen, twenty first and twenty fifth in several areas of Jefferson County. Cal, you want to?
Yes, sir, we need to make sure y'all authorize, you know, as a result of the storm, C and D debris will be picked up, typically if somebody remodels the house, the contractor takes the C and D to the landfill, pays those fees and tornadoes knocked them down. We have a lot of debris, C and D particularly, that we want to make sure y'all are aware, wanted us to pick up and make sure we're recovered properly to do this, so.
Is this an unincorporated or an our area or just throughout the county?
I hope, we should be throughout the county, but of course, we won't pick anything up in a city unless y'all authorize that further.
Or unless it's our through vote.
Correct. We will our through votes.
Correct.
But we are Fulton Dell, we are talking with them about how we might help them from that tornado damage and hopefully come back to you saying with some ideas.
Yeah, we didn't make the uh FEMA threshold, which would have given public assistance for counties and cities to uh do a seventy five, twenty five, they do a twenty five percent match with FEMA. Our uh, we made the county threshold, which is about three point two meters. This is, I'm talking about the January twenty fifth storm, we're not really be close on the other. The January twenty fifth storm, we were the only county hit. So we met the county criteria threshold, but the state threshold, we have to have a seven point four meter or greater of damages that are not insured. So if you've got an insured building, a business or school or even church or anything like that, or a house is insured, that doesn't count against that threshold. Our our threshold was seven point four meters and we're only at six point nine and we're not beyond the threshold. So we appreciate um Cal considering, you know, doing what we can because once, you know, different cities, we were very appreciative because they pitched in and helped Fulton Dell. But then other storms hit and so everybody kinda uh got got, had to clean up their own cities or we're helping in other places. So we're, they're they're kinda left to do it themselves. We're we're looking at several options, but one of the options is they would hire county committee to help them or through one of our contractors that we can bid and and help them out there. Because right as of yesterday, there's about twenty four houses that have been torn down that are pushed out to the road and a lot of these houses have been torn down, not by contractors, but by volunteers that come in and bring back. So we we still, they still have a lot of work.
A lot of work.
And uh and, you know, when these storms hit, the, I've said on the one, that the sensationalism passes after two weeks and then, but these people are still left with what what they're left with. Also, uh we didn't meet the criteria for these people to get individual assistance from FEMA. Those are the same uh issues I talked about before. But as of tomorrow, the Small Business Administration opened up a site at the Fulton Dell Library where people can come in and apply for an SBA loan. And that is up to two hundred thousand dollars to repair your home at a one point one to two five interest rate on the loan. Uh you can get up to forty thousand dollars in a loan if you're a mentor in this personal property uh that that's been destroyed. And for a non-profit, the interest rate's two percent and for a business, it's three percent. So we'll have people, uh there's a disaster, disaster customer service at uh, I forget what the website is, I'll get that. And then there's an eight hundred number where you can apply a person at Fulton Dell. So that's where we are on the on the Fulton Dell storm. The other areas, we still have uh work to do. And about the other area, uh not not many people know it, but the F one tornado that hit on March the twenty fifth, the one that swung up by the airport and, you know, eventually came right over our house uh as we dug in the in the cover. Uh then then do a lot, a whole lot of damage to Trustville, hit, hit the different memorial and then knocked down some trees across Trustville. But between I four fifty nine and robe up, you're really knocking down a lot of trees, right through houses over there. So it's the city of Birmingham mostly and a little bit of Iron Hill. Uh but but it was an F one, so they got a lot of damage over there and a lot of people affected over there. So whatever, you know, three three storms in eight weeks, that's that's enough. So hopefully it won't be a little quieter. Thank you. Oh, have resolution for debris cleanup, do you very soon?
Yeah.
That, I'll first say aye.
Aye.
County attorney, we have uh third amendment to Wood O'Brien's contract uh with no additional funding needed at this time, and a bunch of property theft. Move all of them.
Move them out.
All right, have a motion in a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Have sale of the county property at the West End Health Center that's been on the books for a while.
Mr. We could, we could tell them that one more time, we have some more.
More more nails to do.
And then call them back to let them on some identification to the law.
Okay, tell you what, let's do, that's that's roll out till Thursday or pull it? No, that's just pull. And when they get it right, well, they'll put it back on there. That that's pull this to to a time to be determined, that way it won't show back there.
I saw a move.
A motion?
Second.
I'll first say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, no. All right, we have five minutes, uh Ms. Ditcher, you're up.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Under finesse, we have our normal in progress, purchasing agenda report, purchasing exception report for the weeks of March eleventh through the seventeenth, March eighteenth through March twenty fourth. Item number four is the unusual demand report. Item five is our procurement statement for Jefferson County Union.
Item twenty five, a motion, second, any discussion? All the favors please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, under question, Nantucket Office, we have item number one, which will delay until the next commission meeting provides additional information. Item number two, multiple staff development and individual staff development, and we also have our information. Item number two, multiple staff development and individual staff development, and we also have our informational access.
Have a motion?
Move it.
All the folks please say aye.
Alright.
Thank you. Now we have, uh, Developmental Services, is she ready? Wow. We got a garage coming in, what we got going on?
They had two, uh, agenda items and then they, they all, and, and all this, we have a quick presentation on the work they've done for, uh, for permitting and for, for our citizens. So, uh, we can do the two items first and Derek can do a quick presentation.
We bring you good news.
Okay. Um, uh, item one and two, what you got?
The first item is a grant for three hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars from Alabama DOT. We have a sixty-two thousand five hundred dollar match. It is to help us prepare and write a countywide comprehensive plan for Jefferson County.
Over what period of time?
Um, after this is approved, we will then go out for this to actually hire a consultant for. And the contract has a lifespan to fill on December of twenty-twenty-two.
Probably take.
Probably a good year because we want to do a lot of neighborhood involvement in developing this plan.
And is that, does that include demolition type stuff to?
No, sir, this is just developing you all a long-range comprehensive plan.
We hope to have demolition next commission.
Next commission? Sorry, next commission to do demolition. Just give us a sneak preview. Sneak preview of what this will, will, the comprehensive plan, what will it tell us and what will it do?
It would be.
The comprehensive plan.
It would be similar to what the city of Birmingham has. It actually looks at different elements. It looks at the transportation, um, future growth and economic development, um, neighborhood issues, creating a sense of place, um, really creating successful, sustainable communities.
Alright. Do I have a motion, one, two?
Seven.
Have a motion second, I'll basically say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
The next.
Let me, let me do my final. I have one community grant.
How's that?
Say aye. I'll basically say aye.
Aye.
My, sorry. My next slide was really just correcting a tremendous error we have in the ESD same day as that right there.
Yeah, they, they all hit one in two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got it.
Okay.
So they will do a quick presentation, commissioner, while she passes that out. I wanted to thank the county building inspectors, the chief building inspectors. This superhuman being at the end, Kathy, Michael, um, Jeff, all of them have worked hard to basically rewrite a lot of their processes and get them computerized and online so that our citizens can get permits a lot faster, a lot more efficient and save them time and money.
So that superhuman being was individual, only not.
Well, they all are, but, because what they've had to do is keep working the old system on paper. Then implement the new and then wear two, you know, one permit side by side. So they've done a lot of extra work.
Alright. Okay. Ready?
Ready, Michael. This is going to be high level, um, so I don't want to take too much of your time, but it is some good information and some good news from you all. Development Services is from working very hard, as Cal said, to take all of our paper processes and turn them into an electronic form. Um, last year with COVID, we had some unique challenges, um, next slide. Um, in that, you know, we still had customers, we still had a paper process. And so April of last year, we actually turned loose all of our trade permits to be online and electronic, which only left the building type records as being a paper process. Um, this has given the county the ability to provide their customers no driving down here, there's no parking. They have no paper to deal with, they're open twenty-four seven. Some of the things that you can do online, all of the planning applications that Michael presents to you and Andrew, they are available online. Building, site plan, erosion control permits, we have finished all of those and they're all available online. ESD also has their permits online. Contractor licensing registration is available online. Uh, they can also request inspections and I'll go into more detail on that in a minute. And our plan submission is now electronic. You don't need to bring the large E-size paper plans down and pay, you know, several hundred dollars to have those printed. We accept everything electronic. One of the things that is new and is a bit of an adjustment for our customers, but is a best national practice, we have a combo permit right now. So if you want to build a new house or a new commercial building, it is one permit number. You do not have to get separate trade permits and associate them back. So when you get a new permit for us or miscellaneous permit, all of those trades are already included. Um, you can do all of this through our online portal. You can pay online, so we never really need to have you come down here at all. And again, you can do all of this twenty-four seven, um, from the comfort of your home or your office. This is an example of what the customer sees for the portal. We have some online training information and the bottom right is what the customer reviews to create a user account and log in to be able to apply the permits. As I said earlier, inspection services changed as well. We are using a, a new vendor software. It is IVR, integrated voice response, that also use texting. So you have three ways to request an inspection. You can do that through the website on seller. You can do that, again, using your IVR, which works with both landline and cellular devices. And then if you're really good, you can take your cell phone, you can actually text inspection requests to us. This is just an idea of what it looks like. Um, you know, you have voice, you have select texts. The portal on the right is what us staff can actually see, so we can see when the calls are highest trending and the texting is highest trending as well. Um, as far as the texting, this is what you would see. You would select, um, the number that we have, you would text schedule. And the first thing that would pop up would be, you have reached the Jefferson County Premier Permitting Select Text System. And it'd ask you for your permit number. Um, you can also have a list of all the inspection types that are available. You can communicate with your inspector through this and you can also ask for a reschedule or cancellation through this. Yes, sir.
Let, let me ask you one, what's right here? Uh, if somebody calls for inspection, how long does that respond to? I know it varies, but.
Um, we have a one person right now who's taking those calls. Um, usually we get to that same day that somebody actually calls.
Great.
Okay. And we, we tracked that too in the case of plan, I think within one day, they were over ninety percent.
We're encouraging more people to use the IVR and the select texts because again, it is a faster response than you trying to call and get ahold of one of us sometimes. Next slide, you can see, you know, about when our peak activity is for the calls that are coming in. So that helps us know when to have more resources for those people that are still actually calling. Paper plans, we don't really encourage people to do that anymore. We accept everything electronic, again, that's twenty-four seven. And it's associated with the same permit that you use to, um, apply for your new construction. It's also embedded within our online software, so it is seamless experience to our customers. This helps everyone, the customer and staff. Um, you get things approved a little bit faster because we don't necessarily have paper plans to deal with. We don't have to try and get multiple copies of those and share them with other staff. And it is a savings to the customer because they no longer have to provide us with those, you know, six-inch almost living trees that they bring to the front counter. Um, this is just an idea of what it looks like in the ePermit Hub plan room. Um, we have our customized development services stamps for all of the plans. Um, the reviewer would make the little, um, callouts of what needs to be fixed. The applicant can see that and can address that on the fly. Can you go to the next one? I don't know if we can play this video enough for you, it just gives you a quick idea about what the electronic plan process is and how seamless it is for the customer. ESD is also using ePermit Hub, so they too have a seamless environment built in for their construction plans that they accept.
Derek, does any other county have, have all electric permits online?
Not to my knowledge. Um, we are probably the first county in Alabama to take it to this level. One of the things that's fairly unique for your inspectors too, during COVID, I really didn't want to see them anymore because we were trying to keep them out of the field and, you know, doing their job and keeping them safe instead of having to come into the office. They have a mobile app, they all have iPads now, including our COVID enforcement zoning officers. And they actually use the, the applications on their iPad. They don't come into the office anymore except on rare occasions and they can essentially leave from their home, go to their job sites for the day. It provides them a list of everything they need to do that day and also gives them routing.
We'd like to thank Shree and all his folks too. It's been a massive effort, Kathy, Derek, all their staff and Shree and all his staff. It really, it has really been going on a lot for a while because we, when COVID hit, they drive up to the street with a set of vans, call somebody, we'd run down the street, get them and drive them to the.
Yeah, it was strange, we didn't fall in the parking garage, it was kind of weird.
Hey, when, when you, um, you're, you said you're encouraging, um, contractors to do that. Are you doing anything educational to help them? Technology adoption, uh, what are you, what are you doing to help them kind of get there for some of them that may not have?
We have been in close contact with homeowners association and I know they have been notifying their members of the services we have. We are getting ready to probably do more educational training on the electronic plans. Um, a lot of customers already have their plans really electronically already in auto plan and microstation. So for them, it's more just how to navigate to actually upload those. You want to address that a little bit better, Kathy?
The education program that we're going through? So pushing out all of this, uh, because of the COVID pandemic.
It's been hard.
Uh, the timeline has been not what we would have originally wanted to do, to do a lot of public education of the upload and the tools and everything that's available. So now we're going to take some time to step back because we're not actively having to develop anything and now do the training and try to offer stuff online as well. So we have an information page that we're going to be posting all this information to. The product developer for the ePermit Hub solution, the digital plan review, actually has a lot of great video content already created, so that's all available on our website as well branded to the Jefferson County product. And we're going to be reaching out and doing more email campaigns, surveys and seeing what the community is in need of for training. And hopefully, one day when we ever go back to meeting, seeing people in person, we'll try to hold stuff, um, in the courthouse training, you know, probably quarterly for anybody that feels that they still would like to come in and ask questions of the staff.
Good, thank you. I want to just say thank y'all, this is great, this is for, really, really.
It's been a labor. Well, we began in twenty-seventeen, I don't know if you were there.
And I know that, that you and Michael have been around here all the time and bringing your information of what we used to be and what we are now. And we thank y'all for all of your perseverance, for the love, appreciate it.
Hey, that's good work.
Mr. President, I have one more.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Um, Ms. Bishop has reminded me once again that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget package will be sent out next week to all the departments, so we'll start that process here and go in months.
And, uh, I'm with you too, so, uh, Congresswoman came yesterday and presented, uh, about a big rescue act and a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. I know the last minute close, but they called me, I called y'all, and that was on Friday. And that's when I found out, as soon as I did, I, I emailed that out.
And, and that's something, we're still waiting, I have, on, on how to expand those dollars?
She said that, that Quanille will be here before we get the check, the check will not get here to sixty-eight. So she said that she knows Quanille will be here for me.
And we re-engage or we continue to engage with Wood O'Brien, right? To make sure that, that's how, uh, we have a third party set of eyes looking at that. Make sure, make sure that we're good with our expenditures. So we appreciate that, appreciate the, uh, county attorney. I think county attorney may have something that he'd like to, to say.
I don't think he got.
Did, let me just say.
Did someone say something to him? Congratulations, that would, would be an order, would, I think you may have to have to say something.
Um, thanks to your support. Uh, we were selected by the Birmingham Business Journal as one of the members of the best of the bar for twenty-twenty-one. And that will be, uh, I think it's not, it's going to be virtual this time. I think actually it's going to be in their publication on the fourteenth.
Good job.
Thank you.
And, uh, and our, your big, can second pre is winding down?
Correct.
Ian?
Correct. Coordinated in order with our, uh, final payment for attorney's fees, uh, to Martin Bryan parties. And so once we get that paid, we are at the point of continuing our, uh, reporting period. But that will be the final order of business that we have. We also received an additional amount of money, it's about seventy thousand dollars. That was in a trust fund, a trust account for the receiver's lawyer, uh, to, at that point, to manage people and then, uh, victims of our issues. But that money has now been awarded back to the county to be earmarked FID for their work, uh, as far as equity, equity and inclusion to the county. So that money will come back to the county.
And that's right, in inclusion, and did, did we move that, we moved that to, we pulled?
We pulled.
We're going to provide more information.
More, more information, that's right. Alright, and the ACCA, it's, I think they're ramping up to help other counties with, with this, uh, rescue act funds. I'm not sure if they're going to hire somebody to contract, but what I understand, they were going to do it themselves. And that is they provide, like we have with O'Brien, they're going to provide the service to these smaller counties. They have a letter, if you're, if you're, uh, getting seven million dollars or less, I think they're going to charge eight percent. If you get seven million or more, they'll charge a five percent fee. And I'm hoping that, uh, we of course will have our own contractor, but maybe we can contribute something to that fund so that they can help these other smaller, uh, counties that don't, don't have the wherewithal, uh, to do, to do this. But that's something we'll have to discuss when we, but we're, we're still waiting on treasury. And that's, that's the, that's the, that's the ball that we're watching for to come over the net and then we'll, we'll go.
So Governor Bybee, and her mask mandate, um, uh, ends on, my, my understanding that, uh, city of Birmingham will probably pass a, an extended mask ordinance. Uh, I'm not sure, um, where our health officer is.
I don't think he's going to follow the state guy.
I wanted to, I was wanting to break that up to, um, Anna.
Follow the state.
And we, we can't do anything without, we have to let Dr. Wilson. And we, we can't do anything without, we, I could, Dr. Wilson.
We can do whatever we want to within our facilities, uh, without instructing, without telling anyone, but I think that he will be, uh, prudent to follow state guidance on this, try to have some type of enforcement as, as we move forward. I believe that's what, uh, uh, Dr. Wilson's going to do.
Well, I'm, I'm going to ask him to extend it because I've got several comments, uh, for businesses, uh, that wants to extend.
That's fine. You know, it's, it's personal choice. Yeah, it's, it, that's, any, any business that, that wants to extend the, the mask mandate to come do business with, is perfectly welcome to do that. And no, no problem at all. What, I think what the county health officer had is, we're talking about, um, a, a mandate county law. And I, I don't know, and I think he's going to be able to call today.
Yeah.
And that, that we will, we will look at that and see where that is, but I, my gut tells me that he's going to follow the state.
The B B A also did a, um, I think all of us were in on the survey that went out. Um, and, uh, it went to a lot of businesses, um, asking and it was, it was really fifty fifty and then they got some of the questions. If you guys did not get, um, uh, copied that, I'll be sure to mail it out, um, so you can, uh, see what, what it is.
I had a comment.
All right, guys. Thank you so very much for speaking to me.